Good evening. Tonight is Thursday, October the 2nd. This is the workshop. We're going to start out with a silent prayer. Vice President Brown, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Principals' report. Lisa Ariola Samoess.
Good evening, Madam President. Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, our student representative, I am Lisa Ariola Samoess. I am the principal here at State Street, and I do cover our expulsion program in the evenings. I'd like to welcome all of you here to our program. I've been here since 2001 as a teacher and now the building administrator for the last 15-plus years. And so I'd like to take you through a quick walk of our program. Our mission here at the program is through collaboration with families in the community to prepare our diverse learners as a whole to meet the challenges of our ever-changing global society. So our mission has been changing as our population and students have changed. Our program services students, kindergarten, sometimes as young as preschool, through 12th grade. So currently, we have 109 students enrolled in the program. We operate under the auspice of SCORE, which is our students are all safe, they complete their assignments, they own their behavior, and they are respectful, they follow our district's electronic policy. And that has been in place for a long time. The data collected on that is what we use to support our students through their transition, both in and out of the program. So when our students start to explore options in less restrictive environments, we use that SCORE platform for them to measure their successes. Here is everybody in my building who makes it all happen. I couldn't do it without them. We are a united front. We have a team of four clinical social workers, a school counselor, behavior counselors, special education teachers, and paraprofessionals. We have access to our literacy facilitator, our brand-new art, business, and construction teachers, thanks to Carly and Marissa, our physical education teacher, we have hall monitor, and then we have speech and language, our ESL teacher, our school psychologist through CREG, our parent liaison, our school resource officer, and our OT and PT staff who support our students through their IEPs. Most of what you're going to see through this PowerPoint is going to be some of our students highlighting their hard work. Ms. Golfasani is a brand-new art teacher who came to our program with many years of experience. She's been super excited to work with our student population, taking both the curriculum and the art curriculum, blending it together, and giving kids opportunities through multimodal approaches. We have access to a library media specialist, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, who comes to us on E-Day for our elementary friends to do Makerspace. And then we have a music teacher who we share on B-Day from Hopewell, who comes over and works with our elementary friends as well. Mr. Grasso is our PE and health teacher. He works with all of our students, pre-K through 12, on all different pieces of the physical and health education programming. As you'll see, we were able to open our business program as well with Mr. Dreyfach this year, giving our students opportunities to work on personal finance and financial literacy. Staff and students really work on the relationship. So most of our kids do not come here for academic struggles, they come here for social, emotional, and mental health needs. And so building relationships, creating schools a safe place, and building those relationships with adults seem to be our foundation, and that's really what we strive for. Our paraprofessional staff work with our students through all of our academic classes, so every classroom has an assigned paraprofessional who travels with that class to the Unified Arts and throughout the day, supporting students in any way they need to. We've been very fortunate over the years to build great community partnerships. Through that, obviously celebrating our Hispanic Heritage Month, we have access and onsite staffing from Klingberg Family Center, who provides our counseling in addition to our licensed social workers. They have family sessions and take referrals for both our day program and our evening program, so a part of the expulsion piece as well. You'll see that the fire department, the police department, all contribute to being part of the students' days through giving them positive interactions and opportunities. We have a care closet for our friends who need things, that we take donations from, and local businesses help to support. We've also had the opportunity to travel with our friends. Mr. Albinis, although I nag him, gives me the opportunity to have vans and supports to access to different things. So we've been able to go to the state capitol, different sporting events, and follow our peers in other environments. We have presentations from different people based on what's available to kids and their interests. So we had staff come from Danbury Federal Facility to come down and talk to the kids. Some kids wanted to be correction officers and see what it was like, so we had them come down and talk with us. We do have access to a part-time parent liaison that we share with Enlightenment, Ms. Maldonado. She offers a variety of family-sponsored events. She does a lot with our students, as well as the day-to-day things like the coffee cart, creative activities for students, opening book bingo, family-sponsored things at night to do workshops and during the day, anything that we can do to kind of engage our parents in becoming part of their child's educational system. A lot of times when our friends come to us, the family is not as engaged as we would like them to be, and so we really try to foster that healthy relationship with them, meeting them anywhere in the middle that we can, kind of building that bridge, taking down those barriers, and really welcoming them into the school community, which works miles for us. We are excited to have Chef James join us this year. Our students have learned to make pasta, have opened up baked goods, they are working on the world of work on top of the actual culinary experiences. So the foundational pieces to owning and operating a business, the health and hygiene behind keeping a kitchen clean and what needs to happen, and then the exposure and experiences of things that they can take back with them into the real world. So they've had a great time. For those of you who had the opportunity, he's upstairs, and he does have a spread out for everyone with the kids that may. We do have a full-time school counselor, Ms. Matthews, and she joined us, and she basically works with our students and families to take interest inventories from students, explore what their next steps are, provide access and opportunities for all students to see what the real world has outside of them. So anything from barber and trade exploration, to Zion Bank coming in and working with our students and giving presentations, to open savings accounts, to, you know, health and hygiene, to, you know, pretty much anything at this point. She has got Junior Achievement, who does Mindful Mondays with our students. The Career and Tech Schools come and do presentations. We've had students go off to both Nagato Valley and Central in the last year. So we're very proud of all of them and their work, and it really couldn't be done without her and the staff's support in making those opportunities possible. This year, we welcomed Mr. Torres. He was the carpenter foreman for the city, wanted to kind of start working with students and giving back. He has opened our construction classes. He's done an amazing job in giving the kids real-world experience. He asked me on the first day if he could do something extreme and dramatic. I said, "Sure." Took a, built a pretend wall, put a sledgehammer through it, and it's like, "We're going to learn to sheet rock." And I was like, "Oh, my God." And the kids had a great time doing it, but as you'll see, they started to work on projects throughout the building, kind of repairing and doing the things that they need to do, and then learning those real-life skills, like how to fix a lock, how to change a doorknob, how to fix sheet rock, how to hang a TV. And so he works diligently with the kids. Both our male and female students love his class, you know, they're constantly asking to get into it, so we appreciate that opportunity. As we transition from our day program, we work on our Evening and Expulsion Academy. That process is very unique, so students who are put up for referral for the expulsion process go to a hearing, where a hearing officer determines their orders of expulsion, whether they will be expelled, whether they won't be expelled, and what the conditions of that expulsion will look like. Expulsions are no more than 180 school days, and so sometimes, and what we're finding with some of our friends is they want to stay a little longer, we are encouraging them to transition back, and we work with the IOP process, which is their individualized learning plans, to transition them back to their district schools with supports and services. So as we start to do that, our students have access to counseling, a school social worker, transition services, all the things that we offer for the most part during the day are offered in the evening as well. We've had close to, or a little over 45 Imagine Learning courses completed since we opened on January 23rd. So that is half and full-credit courses, giving students the opportunity to move closer towards graduation, work on that credit retrieval platform for kids who may have missed points of their education, fill those gaps. So 45 courses have been completed, and as of today, we have an enrollment of 34 with six carry pending cases, we believe. And so that number will fluctuate. We do have a handful of students who will go back to their district school over the next month or two, but the enrollment is constantly rolling. So one of the things that we were tasked to do last year, because obviously Expulsion Academy has a stigma to it, and the name expulsion has a stigma to it, was to rename and rebrand the program. And in doing so, the kids were kind of creative in their own way, but they really liked the name Expulsion Academy, which we were kind of like, "Yes, it is what it is." And we're like, "Yeah, but no, it's not." So we really want them to see what the vision of the program is. And while it is a serving and expulsion period, there is a vision for the program. Students are going to work diligently to brainstorm this new name. They have come up with options. We've created a vision and a mission to the program. We have worked on the personal growth and accountability measures that are established through it. We are continuing their academic support through both the Imagine Learning and onsite teachers, as well as Google Classroom. They have their social-emotional development platform with both the school counselor and the school social worker, as well as access to Klingberg and any of their providers. So we have a ton of support from, like, juvenile probation, who comes over, there are CGR clinicians who come over, people pop in at night to kind of support the students through that process. And again, we are working on creating a safe and supportive school environment. Our goal is to provide success, and ultimately, our goal is to provide a smooth transition for our friends when they go back to their district schools when their expulsion is over. So once they've completed their 180 days, the goal is to transition back to their least restrictive environment in the most appropriate setting. Some of our friends go back to their comprehensive sites, some of our friends have come to State Street, and some of our friends have returned to Enlightenment, depending on what their needs are. And it's going to be very individual, based on kids, what their needs are and the requests are. So we are very excited about it. It seems to be successful. It's open tonight, so if anybody wants to walk through it, you're more than welcome to, let us know. And I think that's about it.
Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner O'Brien?
It's not a question. I just want to congratulate you, because I've, after walking around with you and hearing the changes, in 25 years, it's a big step and a positive step forward. So I congratulate you and I thank you for all the endeavor you put into it, and your staff.
Thank you. We really couldn't have done it without the support of the board, Darren, and my staff, which is top-notch, so I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I also don't have a question. Just walking through this building, the last time I was in this building, it was Enlightenment, and it was one hallway. Seeing this, oh yeah, completely different, and I commend you for leading the change, and the staff, amazing what you guys are doing, and keep up the amazing work. It's truly astounding.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Brown?
Good evening, Lisa. Kudos. I love the name, because I never liked the name expulsion. But I guess the kids did. That's so.
They were okay with it.
That's interesting, huh?
Yeah.
I did have one question, though. Out of the number of students who are expelled, and I know it's not at one point in time, they get expelled different times, are the majority coming to the school, would you say?
Yes.
So the majority are, okay.
The majority are coming to the program. Some factors contribute to, like, whether or not that placement happens, most of which are here. Obviously, some students are on probation, based on whatever the offense is, maybe during that 180-day period, or some kids are accessing, like, a hybrid model, right? So if they only need English to graduate, then they would come in for the English component, and they would work on that piece. So we're very strategic in the kids and what their opportunities are when they're here, because, you know, there's a whole picture that we look at, and it's not just that one academic piece. We want them to have the opportunity to be employed. Some of our friends are working during the day or in the evening, some are required to still attend programs and groups, so we try to take into consideration all of those pieces that they need during that window. But most are here onsite.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks.
Commissioner Lopez?
Sorry, now I do have a question.
Okay, that's okay.
Now, you know, they have such a great time at the Crossroads, right? They probably like that smaller classroom setting.
Yes.
What do we do when they don't want to return back to district school?
Lots of coaxing. So a lot of the times, we have great conversations with my colleagues, and we talk about what that could look like for kids, that point of person and contact, you know, us going up and supporting them. So like, we have a friend who will return tomorrow morning to one of the comprehensive schools, and my first question to her tonight was, is like, "You ready to do this?" "Nope." "Okay, so what are we going to do? I'm going to be there." "Okay, what time do you want us to meet you there?" "6:15." I'm like, "Hmm, still beauty sleep." "Nope." And I'm pretty sure the school's not open at 6:15. So we go out and support them. We help build those relationships with the staff at the other sites, and then we work to make sure that transition is smooth. We're always, our doors are always open, so while we don't want the kids to return to us through that process, our doors are open for questions, concerns, support, staff relationships, and still kids from last year whose expulsions have ended have checked in with us. So I think that relational piece is huge. Again, making that point of contact to, with the district schools can be huge, and trying to help foster that relationship.
Thank you.
Dr. Schwartz?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, in terms of the State Street program and the Crossroads program, just want to thank you, Lisa, for your leadership, and Ben, of course, who was a big part of that success here, but also with the Crossroads, I'm going to mess that up, I know I'm going to call it something else, but, you know, just want to give kudos. I know a lot of people worked very hard on opening that, so, you know, not just Ben and Lisa, but Wendy and Niree and Jan, and even Human Capital Office, and Juan and Jean, and just the recruiting also, that you can see now, switching back to the State Street program, but you can see the culinary, you can see these positions that were really important for us to fill. So the Marissa and Carlys of the world, working in the Human Capital Department, really kind of pushing and finding these gems of teachers. And of course, this wouldn't happen, and, you know, things like the Crossroad Academy, they don't happen without collaboration with WTA, SAW. So I see Kevin back there, I want to thank you for working with us on that as well, because it does take an entire district working together to work these things out, and so I want to give kudos to you, Lisa, and to the team here, and just ask, I know, I don't want to take your shine, but we usually ask if there's any staff here to have them stand, so.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, President. Appreciate it. Just in case.
Take my shine.
Take that shine. I've done it a few times, maybe. Any State Street staff here?
Yes, and some are still upstairs working, so.
I yield my time to the President.
Thank you, Lisa. Item number one, committee of the whole, new school year registration, Mr. Albinis and Mrs. Romano. Ramirez. Romero. See? I'm going to get a text.
It's my real.
Let me just have this for a second. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Board of Education Student Representative, Superintendent Dr. Schwartz, thank you so much. If you remember, a couple months back, we had reports from many of my departments, and we asked that we waited until October for a little bit more information. If we gave you that information in September, August, it wouldn't really reflect what really goes on in the Welcome Center. There's just a lot of activity down there. And so I asked that we wait till today. Ms. Romero, Mrs. Romero will present, and we have, of course, Ms. Davis with us, who oversees a lot of this as well now, so we wanted the three of us up here for this, but Sandra will take over and give a good portion of this, and then we'll take your questions.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, Student Representatives, Superintendent Dr. Schwartz, and members of the Waterbury community. I want, yeah, I want to start off with providing you guys an overview of the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center mission is to engage families and community members as partners in building supportive and collaborative environment. Here you can see the five departments, six departments that are currently at the Welcome Center. We have the Bus Transportation, Registration, Records, McKinney-Vento, Attendance Coordinator, and the Multilingual Department. Between the months of July 1st and September 30, we received 1,372 in-person visits. This is now counting the incoming calls that we received. Just want to point out that the in-person visits can come in from one department, but it can end up being a visit for other departments as well. A visit can last between 10 minutes to an hour, depending on the needs of our families. My next slide provides you those visits. I broke it down for you guys for between those three months. As you can see, August, it's our month with the highest visits, of course, because it's the month of when school starts. We received over 700, we received 738 visits. September, as of yesterday, we were 400 visits. At our Welcome Center, we speak three different languages, which is English, Spanish, and My next slide, I broke it down more in-depth for you guys, based on the departments of visits. You can see registration is most often the primary reason families come in at the Welcome Center. However, in some cases, the purpose of this visit may shift after staff gathers more details about family needs. The other, the way we collect the data is based on the parent sign-in sheets. We got it, we're going to be tweaking it a little bit more to go, to have more accurate data for us to see and to make informed decisions, but the other consists of, it could be McKinney-Vento or Registration. But some of the visits that we have been receiving have been questions around asking support to translate documents, to provide information to families seeking housing. We have families coming in, letting us know that they want to purchase a house, and they want to ask, like, what school district they belong to, and how the bus transportation works, so it varies all the kind of questions we have at our Welcome Center. This slide provides you a report on kindergarten to eighth-grade applications we have received. You can see kindergarten received 237, a total for between the month of July and September 1st, I mean, September 30 is 762. Next, we want to share with you the applications coming in through the Office of Early Childhood. We received 279, and high schools 226, a total of 505. Early entry kindergarten tools, you know, we, students tested between, with birth dates between September 1st and December 31st. We, Waterbury Public Schools, 11, 11 of them entering kindergarten. Tested by OEC, 96, 44 came in into kindergarten, Community, 98, and 72, a total of 127 kids that came in into our kindergarten grades. Here is a report between, for our Welcome Center. As you can see, currently, at September 3rd, we had 12,218 students between the grades of kindergarten to eighth grade. The white, the district-wide enrollment, we're currently at 17,482. This number is as of yesterday. We all know how important family engagement is in the crucial life of our students. Lisa just talked about the engagement at the school level. We currently have 29 parent liaisons at our school and three vacancies, and these are the schools we have vacancies at, which is Buckso, Anex, Kingsbury, and Regan. As we continue to build family engagement at the school level, we are working together to increase parent involvement at the schools, and we are doing that through our parent liaisons. You can see that at the school level, we have 27, no, I'm sorry, 27, PTO, I'm talking, let me take that back, the parent-teacher organizations, we have 27 no PTO, and then we have five with PTO. School Governance Council, which is another important avenue for parents to support at our school levels, we currently have, I'm sorry, this is so tiny, I should have, it's 29 no-school governance, and three, there you go, and three who have a school governance at our school. And three who have a school governance at our school level. As we continue to work on strengthening family engagement, we are excited to share a series of upcoming events and initiatives designed to help our families feel more connected to our schools and communities. The ongoing registration events at the Welcome Center, we want to host events at various school locations to make registration process more accessible and convenient for families. Similar to pop-up events, we also, parent workshops. We are going to be offering workshops at the Welcome Center focusing on parents and practical tools and strategies to support their child's learning and development at home. One that I'm looking forward is to providing social emotional learning workshops to our families. Volunteer opportunities. We're developing volunteer opportunities for families to volunteer at the Welcome Center, including leading workshops and sharing their own skills and expertise with their families. I have come across families having key skills that it would be beneficial for them to, you know, lead those workshops and for their parents, you know, to be able to learn from parent to parent. And then community partnerships. We will continue to collaborate with local community organizations to bring additional support and resource to our families. So, part of the work that I've been doing is connecting with our organizations and just inquiring what service can be offered to our families. At the Welcome Center, one of the goals is for our Welcome Center to be the, the home of the families to come in and to feel comfortable asking any questions they may have. And then we be able to redirect them to the organization that can provide those needs, support those needs that they have. And then family engagement at schools. As a district, we are going to be providing training for our parent liaisons and principals focusing on the collaboration with PTO and school governance. These trainings are going to be strengthening leadership and promote family involvement at every school. Same thing, volunteer opportunities. But at the school, we recognize that parents, you know, want to come into the schools. They want to, they want to participate. Not necessarily for PTO or school governance, but they want to come into schools and help like bulletin boards, help out with classrooms. So, we're, we're looking into the possibility of having that. And of course, making more meaningful connections with family once they arrive at our school community. Something that we have tweaked a little bit is that when a family arrives at the Welcome Center, we try our best to connect with the parent liaison and inform them that that family is coming to their school so they'll be able to receive them. So, that hands-off is very transparent and smoothly for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Romero.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Arlen, Latoya.
This isn't a question, it's just a comment. I'm glad to hear so much about the parent engagement, including parents and the activities in school, not only out of school, but inside the school. So, I'm really happy to hear that parent engagement is really being noticed and recognized.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Hi, thank you for the report. My concern and question is in regards to your upper grades, not kindergarten. But when a parent comes in to the city and comes to the Welcome Center, if they have a special needs child and they bring their IEP, what happens to the parents in their IEP after they've been with you? If it happens?
So, at a Welcome Center, we register kids K through 8th. The high school, they, the high school students go to their high school to register. Yeah. So, I, I haven't come across that.
You don't have any children coming in from out of, or out of Waterbury moving in?
For high school kids?
No. First grade through fifth.
So, our process is, once we received our students with IEPs, we connect with our SPED department because they, they have that area of expertise. And they will guide us into, you know, instructing us with school that we, we place the student at. We don't, we don't go into the dub with the IEP.
No, but there are steps in place.
Yes.
Okay.
So, they come in, they provide the IEP. Well, one of the things that our staff does is very look at the IEP if it's expired. Because we also want to educate our parents. Sometimes our parents come with IEPs and they're not aware that it has expired. So, they come very, like, asking, like, when the service is about to start, which we explain to the parents, like, we have to connect with our SPED department. They will, they will have to be involved as well. They will have to communicate with us. So, we try to, one of the things that we are trying our best at our Welcome Center is to all be consistent and aligned to the message that we're communicating here, we were communicating with our families. So, those are just kind of examples. IEP, I used to work with IEP, I know the process. But, you know, my role is to ensure like the SPED department is part of the process. And, but to me, it's being more transparent to the parent because parents can become very frustrated. You know, they come with this document with, you know, asking for services that, you know, they're entitled to, but there's process here that we have to follow. And we want to make sure that they know about it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
You mentioned in one of the slides, it talked about other reasons why they come into the center. And you said that they sometimes come in for housing. So, it sounds like there's a lot of needs in their community. How do you direct them to those resources?
So, we have the McKinney-vento departments. Our, our expertise there, Shinia Paris, who is the liaison for, has a lot of resources that we're able to connect to them too. But every case is different, right? So, we have to understand what the situation is to be able to refer them to it. We do have a resource guide that we use. I'm a social worker myself, so I try to do a lot of, a lot of research on where can I refer the families to. But the piece that I, I want to make sure, like, we're aware is being very patient and being very transparent with the parent. Because sometimes parents come and they're like, I need housing, I need a shelter. I, I need you to be placed, like, you know. So, it's like getting the resource. And one thing I try to do with the staff is giving accurate information, not just passing along the information because we're not doing a good need for the parent, just passing on information. So, I myself have always called like the resource, just checking in if that's accurate and who to connect them with. So, we do have resources. I'm always open to getting and I'm always researching, like, you know, who can I, you know, get on board and make that connection to pass the information to the family.
And then, there were only about five schools that have a PTO? If I remember the number, right?
So, it started the school year, as, as going back to my conversation, building relationship and maintaining those relationships. So, we, you know, one thing we're working with the parent liaison is to pick up from where we left off. And, you know, at the end of the school year, fortunately, in the summer, you know, parents disconnect. So, it's building them back again, engaging them back into the school. And, you know, every school community needs is different. So, it's, I, you know, I'm, I'm a strong believer by probably the next month and a half, we're gonna have strong PTOs and school governance councils. That's why I said about volunteer opportunities. Some parents will be interested in PTO, some parents will not be interested in PTO. So, it's creating those opportunities also for volunteers, not just PTO and school governance. But I'm a strong believer we'll have almost all of them.
Dr. Schwartz.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. And as we talked through the, even the process of becoming the superintendent here, you recall, we talked a lot about parent engagement. And so, there's already been discussion with administrators in the August professional learning about the PTOs and SGCs. And I sent another message last week about the upcoming training that they're going to have to have. And so, Linda Riddick Baron, who has really worked hard on school governance councils in the past with Mary Ann Merrill, if you remember Mary Ann Merrill. And so, we dug out all the resources that we've had. And, and because really, it, it kind of eroded more during the pandemic time. And so, some of this is refreshers, but we also have a lot of new administrators running buildings. And so, they're tasked, Jackie and Sandra and the team are collecting all of those artifacts so that they can provide a more robust training for administrators to understand not just the differences between the PTOs and SGCs, but their structures and how to best, not just create a meeting for the sake of a meeting, but create something that is meaningful to the school. And so, I said, I just don't want an SGC so I can say we have 100% SGCs. So, I said, it's okay to go a little slower in certain instances at certain schools that may need a little bit more help. Other schools might just need the documents and say, oh yeah, I know what to do. Let me, let me take care of it. So, we're gonna be strategic. And I can say for certain, we'll have 100% SGCs, PTOs by the end of the year. But there are some schools that might need a little bit more support and training along the way to get them up and running. But the goal for this year is 100% all the way through the district.
Thank you.
Vice President Brown. And then Secretary Serrano Adorno.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question in terms of partnerships and some, some families. Is there any, when they come in, is there any opportunity for them to learn about our school-based health clinics and our library? You know, helping them get library cards or, you know, even, even linking up to maybe there's playgroups that they could join with their younger children? So, I'm just wondering what the, what the with is of the community partnerships? Because we're having a hard time getting people to, I mean, we've got beautiful healthcare, school-based health clinics, and they're not utilized. They're just not utilized. So, this may be an opportunity to get them when they first come in, to learn about them anyway. So, I don't know if that's, if you've thought about that.
So, this summer, we were very lucky to have a liaison for the school bus, for the school-based health center downstairs. I would love to keep her there. So, over the summer, we, she was our connector. When a family expressed during registration that they needed a physical vaccination, we would connect her to her immediately. I also had a community helper, a community person that helped us with health insurance. She's also, she was also there on Tuesdays. I wish I could keep her every day. But, you know, we, we were able to plan this, this summer to be able to have those services available for them onsite. That is the goal, to have it onsite rather than sending them to the school-based health center. I have met with the Department of Health to talk about school-based health center. And we're looking at things like, you know, hopefully have a clinic there on the second floor. So, we have a family that's expressing in need of a physical, in need of vaccinations, and we can refer them upstairs. And they can come down, we can finish registration rather than sending them off to, to the school-based health center. We do have flyers of the school-based health center, the, the instructions around how to register. We have helped them with that as well. You know, location, just sending. But it's also, like I said, taking time to explain to the parent, like, the clinic is inside the school. Because sometimes parents misinterpret it, like, I'm not going to that school. That school doesn't belong to my district. But explaining to them, that is where the clinic is at. Another thing we have added on, and we try our best, is to call the person at that clinic and to make sure that they know that this parent is coming over to them. And so, once again, the hands-off, being very transparent and very, very empathetic. Because some families, you know, they, they're new to Waterbury. They don't know where the clinic is at. Just getting to that place and saying, hey, I'm looking for Sandra. Cassandra referred me. It's, it's, it's something that's very helpful for the families.
That's amazing. I'm so glad you're doing that. And how about the library?
So, a lot of the, so, I have, we have a table at the Welcome Center where we have all those resources listed there. When a family comes in, we try to, one is create a package, the school-based health center flyer, the calendar in colors, library, if there's workforce places, if they're in need of jobs. We have two bulletin boards at the Welcome Center. We have displayed that in multiple languages, mostly main English and Spanish. So, a family upon our having conversation, they're expressing those needs, we're able to prepare the package for them and, and give it to them.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Secretary Serrano Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things, Darren, I think you answered. One of them, in parts to the school governance council. I will say, there's a lot of families who speak other languages that want to be involved, but then they sit there and there's no translators. So, you know, to attend either the PTOs or the school governance council, and I agree, I think after COVID, the numbers just kind of dwindled down because I thought it was like a policy to have them. So, I'm glad, I'm, I'm looking forward to see the, the growth. But I would maybe recommend, you know, always having things in different languages sent home. And, you know, even if they sit at a table, they have devices, whether it's headphones that can translate. I know they have it at my church service, something to be able to engage more families. So, I, I hope that, that something like that could be done. Now, I know there was a couple things I have called Darren about at the Welcome Center. I will say, I work at the clinic upstairs on the second floor of the Health Department. We are in the process of hopefully opening up mid-November to start off with flu vaccines. And then eventually, we'll be able to help the schools with the Welcome Center for those kids who need other vaccines and physicals. So, it's baby steps. We're not quite there yet, but hopefully in the next couple of months, we will be so we can help offset the Welcome Center. They can make an appointment right at the second floor, get it out the way, and they're ready to go to school. With that said, are there still vacancies in the Welcome Center? Because I know, Nick, thank you for approving overtime and stuff, but there was a lot of, you know, parents that were reaching out to me that spoke different languages or not even, even if they spoke English. But they were having trouble getting their phone calls returned or their emails. They were like, I've been waiting for two weeks and I know you guys were short-staffed. So, has that position been filled? Or what steps are gonna be in place for next school year to kind of help bridge that gap?
Thank you. Yes, we still have a vacancy for sure.
Just one? Or several? I'm not sure. I don't know.
There's, there's, I like to say there are two. I'm told there's one, but I'm trying to get two. But the thing is, is we tried to hire two and only one took the job, changed their mind. So, now we're back out again trying to not go down that same list, but try to interview again, post an interview again. Very difficult to get employees. In the, in the summer, we did, as you know, we brought in three parent liaisons. Then we paid overtime. They were working Saturdays, they were working nights. The 800 applications that you saw, 794, I think you saw for August, it was probably the last two weeks of August. And they don't come in five a day, come in, they come in 20 a day. And it, it's a long process when you ask for all the documentation, the transfer, IEPs, if they have IEPs, immunization shots.
To translate.
It, it just is a long, and they think if they came in and they submitted their child's name, they're registered. So, it, it's just, it's just a very cumbersome process. I've been working with Dr. Schwartz and Ms. Davis and Sandra. And we have some planned changes, some improvements. It looks like from August, July, I'll say July, to the 1st of October, excuse me, yeah, 1st of October, very busy, but then it's not.
Yeah.
Then it's very manageable. So, do we look at, I don't want to use temp because then they have to be trained all the time. So, we're thinking maybe part-time workers. We're trying to figure something out like that so we can help in the morning and then a different person in the afternoon try to contain our costs.
Yeah. And, and I agree with Ms. Romero. I think even if she were able to get a parent liaison there, they can have the student, or the parents know how to sign up for Parent Square, how to sign up for Power School. Because a lot of them struggle, I don't know how to use it. I was like, oh, I don't know either. But I think if, if that's a potential, that maybe the Welcome Center can have one that can help the, the families. Some of them have multiple kids. I think they need their student ID. I, I just heard it's complicated. So, I don't know if it's in the budget or something or, you know, or maybe the opportunity of a parent volunteer, a parent that knows how to do it and then can train other parents. I'm not sure. I just, I, I get a lot of those families that just don't know how to use, or even the bus app, you know, for you.
Yeah, I mean, they, they may not be technology savvy.
Yeah.
They may not be able to use that. So, they come in, but now they have to wait to get a computer and to go through the process. They still may not understand us. So, they still want to talk to a person, which I totally understand. But there's not always a person available at that moment. And so, it's a frustrating process. But we have some ideas that we can streamline and improve in this coming year.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And Sandra, I know you're working very hard. I, I love the partnerships and the opportunities that the families have to even volunteer. Some of them may be daycare workers. That other family, like, oh my God, I need that. Or whatever the, the case may be, I think that's really crucial. So, I applaud you for that. And then hopefully, like I said, in a couple of months, we can get our clinic up and running to get these kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Arlen, Anthony.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to give a compliment to Ms. Romero. I know we, when we talk about partnerships, we've actually, we've actually done a partnership in the past with a few of our mentorship programs. So, that's something we want to continue to do and continue to offer for our community and our kids. So, you know, you'll be hearing from me and my team, and, and we want to continue that. So, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Sure.
Nice to meet you. I think that what you're doing with the Welcome Center is really wonderful. One thing stuck out to me, which was the, you mentioned you wanted to do like family engagement and like social and emotional learning with the families. And I was wondering like what that would consist of? Because it sounds like a really productive thing to do.
So, I've been training in parenting journey. It's an eight-week session where we provide parents with tools around how to support their child's social emotional learning. So, I, I will definitely be speaking to Nick and Jackie around bringing that to the Welcome Center. That is actually, it's a, it's a curriculum to, you know, to help the parents reflect on their, on their growing up and how that can impact. reflect on their, on their growing up and how that can impact in the, in the lives of the children. So that's just one of the workshops that has been sitting in the back of my head that I want to bring at the Welcome Center. A Welcome Center is an amazing place where we can bring parents, but that's just one. There's definitely more that we will, I want to offer there at the, at the Welcome Center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I'm here, I would like to introduce our student representative, Malon Tumba, from Willby High School. Okay. Human Capital Department and Talent Office. Jean, Carly, and Marissa.
Good evening, everybody. I see New York Yankees bag there, so I know there's a, there's a game at eight o'clock, I think, between the Yankees and the Red Sox.
Jean, see me after this meeting.
I'm a Red Sox fan, so.
For, for a raise, I guess.
All right. So we'll move very quickly. Good evening to all of you, Madam Chairwoman, distinguished members of the Board of Education, and all guests. Dr. Schwartz. I'm joined tonight by Carly Carpenteri and Marissa Waters, who are individuals who are known to you. They serve as our Human Capital Talent and Professional Development Supervisors. We're going to be presenting our annual staffing update to you. But I do want to take a moment to pause and just not miss this moment to recognize not only the work of Carly and Marissa, but also the incredible leadership of Juan Mendoza, who was the Assistant Superintendent for our office for five years. So we want to thank Juan. I get the pleasure tonight of kind of filling in and presenting the information, but the work of these three people are, what you're about to hear is the fruit of their work, both strategic and tactical. And the numbers are going to blow you away in terms of how remarkable they are.
Just before we do that, speaking of Deputy Superintendent Mendoza, we have a special guest with us, because if you know, for the last four years, he has presented with us. He's obviously not up here this year, as Jean just said, but we're having a little separation anxiety, so he's with us in spirit.
But in all seriousness, we just want to thank him for his guidance and support. We could have, we would not have been able to do this work without him. So thank you for your leadership. And anyone else who's having separation anxiety, his photo will be in our office anytime you need it.
That's a lot of adoration for Juan. He told me they were going to do that, but they let me be in the picture at the end. So, well, actually, I'm not in the picture, and I'm in the picture in the end.
You're up here with that.
Yes, that's true. So without taking more of your time, let's get into the data of the evening. Currently, we have 52 staff vacancies. Only 15 of those are classroom teachers, which is down from 69 just last year. That's a 78% decrease. It's not here on paper, but to give you a reference, when I started in March of 2023, one of the first things that Juan said to me is that we were somewhere around over 200 vacancies, considering what has been done in the last just two years. We also track our resignations, which, as you know, is just one indicator of staff turnover. Again, we have good news. There were 89 resignations, which is a decrease of 62 resignations from last year's 151 resignations. That's a great sign that WPS continues to be a place that our staff wants to be and stay. Another staff turnover indicator are retirements. This year, we had 33 retirements, which is a decrease of three individuals. We certainly wish each and every one of them well in the next phase of life. The chart on this slide shows our reduced vacancies highlighted in light blue, along with the current numbers in our hard-to-fill areas. As you may know, special education teachers remain in high demand, not just in Waterbury, but across the state and nation. The district has currently 27 sped vacancies. But even with these 27 vacancies, the overall news is positive. This number is down from 37 just last year at the same time. Another data point we'd like to share with you is extra classes. This is when a teacher in the secondary level teaches beyond their fifth class. Extra classes have decreased from 146 to just 14 this year. And that represents a tremendous significant cost savings to the district. We'd also like to just share some exit survey data with you, the top three reasons indicated by teachers for their departure, personal reasons, family obligations, salary, and relocation. So all very centric to their lives. It's not an indication of Waterbury Public Schools. One final data point that also reflects a positive trend, we had 12 teachers who left the district and then chose to return. So that's a good sign. In my time, I've had the privilege and pleasure to oversee the ESS substitute program in relationship. You may recall that the ESS provides us daily subs, building subs, and long-term subs across the district. These varied subs are a positive supplement to our staffing needs. In some instances, they also are a pipeline of talent. I can report tonight that we had six subs join us in a full-time teaching capacity. Three of them were elementary teachers, one ELA teacher, one math teacher, and one special, special education teacher. I do want to share that we continue to collaborate. I saw Mr. Egan, President Egan, here tonight with the Teachers' Union regarding student overages in shortage areas like special education and related caseloads. We join the WTA in recognizing the importance of having certified teachers for our student instruction. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, we have continued to provide opportunities in collaboration with WTA for middle and high school teachers who teach extra classes through the CBA. Finally, I'd like to quickly share that we have used the state's very supportive temporary staffing options to successfully fill nearly 70 positions across the district. 10 of those are teachers that are through the Northeastern Reciprocity Program. 15 are long-term sub-authorizations. Six are long-term para subs serving, basically they're serving, they were paras that are stepping up to be in the teaching role through a meeting state guidelines. 28 are durational shortage area permits issued by the state, and seven are general, emergency generalists, with six more applications pending.
During the 24-25 school year, we hired a total of 163 staff members, including 150 teachers and 13 administrators. Of these, 28.2% were educators of color, keeping us above the state average. Additionally, 19% were multilingual. Our new hires are fluent in languages including Albanian, French, German, Greek, Italian, Latin, Mandarin, Polish, Portuguese, sign language, Sinhala, and Spanish. These results align with our goal of maintaining at least 25% of new hires as multilingual educators and teachers of color. We remain committed to building a diverse educator workforce that reflects the students we serve.
This slide highlights hiring over the past three months, during which we've hired 129 educators. Of these, 32.5% are educators of color and 16% are multilingual, keeping us on track to meet our end-of-year goal of maintaining at least a 25% hiring rate for diverse and multilingual educators.
Our goal is to maintain a high new teacher retention rate, and recent data reflects strong progress towards this objective, with 91.3% of WPS new teachers retained, highlighting the district's strong commitment to supporting early career educators. Among teachers of color, the retention rate was also high, at 90.6% remaining in their roles. This success is attributed to a multifaceted support system that includes effective and relevant professional development opportunities, a comprehensive new teacher orientation, and targeted mid-year check-ins. Additionally, initiatives such as mindfulness trainings and structured mentorship have played a critical role in fostering a supportive and resilient teaching environment, contributing to the overall retention of our new educators.
We are proud to share that we have filled 72 positions in critical shortage areas this year, including 33 special education teachers, nine science, eight math, six bilingual ESL, six tech ed, along with key support staff like school social workers, school psychologists, and speech and language pathologists. We saw 62 fewer resignations compared to last year and welcomed back 12 rehires. With only 52 current vacancies, we are seeing the positive impact of our continued focus on recruitment and retention.
We were very excited to hire a total of 19 former students now serving as educators across the district, many of them shown for you here on this slide. Choosing to teach where you once learned or in the community you call home reflects a strong commitment to giving back, and we are proud to showcase their dedication.
We have established strategic partnerships with 16 educator preparation programs and Grow Your Own initiatives to support recruitment and retention. Partnerships are displayed for you on this slide. Through these partnerships, we are able to support aspiring educators at every stage, from our high school students to adult learners, including our paraprofessionals and career changers through residencies and alternative certification pathways. We continue to collaborate with Teach Connecticut to offer accessible personalized routes to certification. To date, we've hired 17 new teachers through these partnerships, including educators in art, bilingual education, special education, elementary, and social studies. We are happy to report we have hired all four of our teacher apprentices, all three of our Connecticut teacher residents, and all three of our UConn residents.
This is my favorite slide. We continue to implement targeted recruitment strategies to improve both the quality and number of effective educators in our district. We bring energy, positivity, and a sense of fun to every career fair, all while making real connections with future talent. With our recent success filling positions and significantly reducing vacancy numbers, we've shifted our approach from high-cost advertising to strengthening our Grow Your Own programs, which develop non-certified staff with strong community ties and a long-term commitment, proving to be a sustainable strategy for recruitment and retention. We never miss an opportunity to recruit, as you can see on this slide. During the door decorating contest, we included the QR code where interested candidates could apply online. We have recruited at the hair salon, nail salon, during concerts. And Deputy Mendoza even recruited at his daughter Sophia's karate practice. Our creative, community-driven approach ensures we're not only filling positions, but finding the right people who will grow and thrive with us for years to come.
This past August, we welcomed 150 new teachers at our 2025 New Teacher Orientation. As part of the now annual city bus tour and visit to the Madison Tuck Museum, new staff explored the communities our students call home and experienced Waterbury's rich history and culture. To support our local businesses, attendees also received a sweet treat from Fasha's chocolates, a delicious meal from Vincenzo's Pizzeria, and some WPS swag. We would like to extend our appreciation to Mayor Perneruski, Dr. Schwartz, Bob Haxey, building administrators, academic supervisors, directors, and WTA for sharing encouraging words of wisdom, equipping our new teachers with instructional strategies, and providing essential resources to ensure a successful start to the school year. We would also like to thank the Waterbury Teachers Federal Credit Union for generously sponsoring our breakfast and lunch on day one, and WTA for providing a taco truck on day two.
At the start of tonight's meeting, we proudly showcased our annual new staff spotlight, a tradition we look forward to as a way to welcome and celebrate the newest members of our WPS family. Each year, we ask our new teachers to share their why, or what inspired them to join the field of education and more specifically, choose Waterbury. We would like to highlight just a few of those powerful stories.
Luz Clavijo Perado, a Spanish teacher at Willby, said, "My decision to choose a career in education, and in particular, Waterbury Public Schools, was based on a combination of a passion for teaching, a desire for professional growth, and the appeal of a school district with strong support for its educators, students, and the community at large."
Trevor Damon Smith, a computer education teacher at Northend, stated, "I chose Waterbury in particular because my first job in a school during my undergrad was subbing in Waterbury. During that time, I saw a variety of unique school structures and climates. The staff was very close-knit and offered a district-wide consensus of unity and community that I wanted to be a part of permanently."
Treasure Coleman, a special education teacher at Wilson, responded, "Growing up in Waterbury, I've experienced firsthand the challenges and strengths of this community, which allows me to connect with my students in a way that feels authentic. I know what it's like to navigate this environment, and I can relate to their struggles, dreams, and cultural backgrounds. This connection drives me to create an inclusive and supportive learning environment where every child feels understood and valued, helping them realize their full potential."
These reflections are a glimpse into the dedication our new educators bring with them. Their voices remind us of the strong sense of purpose that continues to shape our schools and strengthen our community.
Just finally tonight, we just want to recognize the team at Human Capital Office. And just extend a special thank you to them for how much that they do to make all these names, all those numbers that you saw, are these go through their hands. So they're processing of it all. On this slide, you can see Senior HR Generalist Lisa Dunn, HR Assistant Denise Gomez, HR Assistant Susanna Silva, Substitute Liaison Donna DeVito, HR Generalist Carla Martinelli, HR Journalist Julie Ostuno, Office Manager Caesar Mary Melios, and Senior HR Generalist Christine Ferris. Not pictured are Juan Mendoza.
We have you covered.
And Jen Orso Moreno, who is out on leave currently. We appreciate their hard work and everything that they do to make it all happen. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about this data or information, or if you have anything afterwards, we're happy to answer as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just a round of applause.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Not a question. I just want to congratulate your entire staff for all you've done, because when I came on the board four years ago, the numbers were, vacancies were high, and I, mostly special at, and I worried so much that we would never get them down below 100. So God bless you guys. You did awesome, the entire staff, including Juan back then. And Gina, thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
Dr. Schwartz.
Just kudos to the team. I don't want to reiterate what's already been said, and I think the applause says it all. But again, the team and Juan with your leadership and Jean taking over. And I do want to take a moment just to, as we're kind of coming out of that high of over 200 vacancies, and we still have a little ways to go, obviously. We seem to be on the right track. The strategies are working. But I do want to take the time to also thank during the height of those vacancies, between the administrators and really teachers who had to take on those extra classes, or the students wouldn't have certified teachers. The teachers that took on dozens of overages over their caseloads, you know, this, that, it was, it was crisis time. It really was. And teachers do what teachers do, and they step up. And, you know, again, working with the union, but also just, that's the spirit of Waterbury. That's the spirit of Waterbury, you know, teachers and Waterbury Public Schools. And so although we are on a different swing, and I think everyone's happy about having certified teachers, I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank all of the teachers who were stepping up in times of crisis to give students that extra class with a certified teacher. I truly appreciate all the work you've done.
Request approval of the Board of Education's 2026 meeting schedule. Request approval of the Board of Education's 2026 meeting schedule. And before I go any further, I forgot to welcome back Lieutenant Britton from his six weeks working with JAG. So welcome back Lieutenant Britton. It's good to have you here. Request approval of a memorandum of understanding. Ms. Furness.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Commissioners, Student Representative, and Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. The Academic Office respectfully requests approval of a no-cost contract with Milestone C for the opportunity for ten to fifteen Waterbury Public Schools educators to participate in industry externships. Teachers will participate in up to three visits to STEM-focused businesses for an interactive tour and focused discussion on classroom applications. Each participant will receive a $100 stipend per visit paid by Milestone C.
Are there any questions? Number five. Gina.
The Education Department respectfully requests approval of Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Waterbury and Cormier Consulting LLC. Waterbury Public Schools entered into a three-year contract with Cormier Consulting under RFP 8118 to provide teacher and administrator professional learning to all Waterbury Public Schools, terminating June 30th, 2027. The purpose of this amendment is to add additional days for Kennedy and Crosby, who were accepted to the Commissioners' Network after we had entered into this contract. So they were already in the contract, I believe, for ten days of support. Now that they're part of the Commissioners' Network, they would like more intensive work with Dr. Cormier, as the other turnaround schools had. And so I attached a table to show the additional days being added for them. In addition to that, Willbe High School was approved for their final year of turnaround, which we didn't know at the time when we entered into this contract. Willbe would also like additional days for this year. Now, Dr. Cormier charged exactly the same price per day as he's been charging for six or seven years. The materials cost the same, so it's the same conditions as the original contract, it's just extending the contract that we have for additional time, all funded through the Commissioner Network funds.
Any questions?
The Education Department respectfully requests approval of an agreement between the City of Waterbury and Vista Higher Learning LLC for an online learning platform. In 2022, we entered into a three-year agreement with Vista in which we purchased the licenses for three years, as well as hardcover textbooks. That contract expired, and in order for us to continue with the same curriculum we built, we need to extend licensing. We do not need to purchase any more books, because unusually, we're able to purchase hardcover books, which is harder and harder to do. They gave us the 2022 pricing. This was initiated under Soul Source, because the only place you can get the learning platform is through Vista Higher Learning. The total amount of the contract is $292,094.52, with equal yearly payments of $97,364.84. And that includes all of the Spanish and Italian licenses for grades six through twelve.
Any questions? Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Six A, Ms. Johns.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Student Representative, Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. The Special Education Department requests approval of Amendment Number One to the agreement between the City of Waterbury Public Schools and Apex Educational Services LLC, which originally was RFP 7610. The purpose of the amendment is to provide board-certified behavior analysts, certified in restraint and seclusion techniques, to support Waterbury Public School District staff with physical and psychological management training, or PMT for short, and to provide district-wide VCBA support to meet the district's restraint training requirements and VCBA support needs for up to 1,073 hours per contract year. The original three-year agreement was executed on June 29th, 2023, for an amount not to exceed, which is listed there in front of you. Amendment Number One to the agreement shall add a compensation in the amount of $120,000, and it will be paid through general funds.
Any questions? Secretary Serrano Adorno.
Thank you. Ms. Johns, how many VCBA's do we currently have for the district?
We currently have, under the previous RFP, they are currently providing us two under the previous contract. They're supporting just Willbe. But district-wide, we have several under different contracts. But Apex itself is just supporting Willbe. But they have different number of VCBA's that will support our district-wide efforts under this amendment.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, that's very important, I appreciate that.
Dr. Schwartz.
Oh, just wanted to, just so the board knows, the special meeting tonight is actually on this item, in case, so, 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 may I ask you a question now? Because usually we wait another two weeks to vote, but because this contract is really, it's time-sensitive, we really needed it to make sure we don't lose services. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that that was on the special meeting later.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Wendy, when you talk about training requirements for restraints, who's getting the training?
So this will be for new staff, as well as staff that had previous training for our previous trainer, that will be coming up for yearly training.
And does this training, restraint training, does it meet with the Connecticut guidelines for restraint? Because our past restraining policies in training are people, were nothing to be spoken about.
Correct. So this training does meet with the Connecticut statutes, and it is actually out of Middlebury, but it's, does meet the Connecticut State statutes very much. So it's actually a nationally-recognized training. Yes, program.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lopez.
How often are we restraining? Do we know that? We actually can provide you that data, but we have that data, we collect that. If we have to use an emergency restraint, we provide that in our CT-SIDS, which is an electronic system, we have to provide that to our parents. But we have that data, if we, through the, Dr. Schwartz, we can provide that to you and through the President.
Yeah, that's, thank you, yeah, that's, that's a good question, because last year, throughout the year, in our cabinet meetings, Wendy, I asked her to present multiple times throughout, just to track it, just to make sure we were not peaking or going above in recent years. The only thing that is a little frustrating about our restraint numbers, that includes the
Out-of-district.
Out-of-district numbers as well. And so even though they may not be in the Waterbury Public Schools, they still count for the Waterbury Public Schools. But what that does allow us to look at, and what did happen, is when we see an inordinate amount coming from any one place, that's when Wendy's team pays a visit and tries to find out what's going on, and digs a little deeper about that one student, because obviously they're still under our responsibility, even though they're outplaced. And so that's a long way of saying we can get you the numbers, but we do monitor it.
Commissioner Latoya Arlen.
So, Dr. Schwartz, a real quick question. So are out-of-city students that are being restrained now, are those being trained by the same company who were, are they being trained as well by the same?
So the trainer is for the vast majority of our own staff, and then each program, like state-approved program out there where students go to are responsible for the hiring of their own staff, the training of their own staff. And so, no, we're not responsible necessarily to provide training for other organizations, especially organizations that have their own ways of hiring and doing their own work. But they are required to also follow state legislation. And then again, like I said, while we follow those numbers, it allows Wendy and her team to go out to see if there's anything that we need to look into as well. But we are not responsible for training their staffs. We would be training the entire state of Connecticut if we were, so. They have to document their own work, they have to document who they're hiring, their staffing. A lot of this is also, just so you know, has been discussed quite a bit at the state legislators in Hartford, because of state-approved programs, and what does that mean? And who's responsible to making sure they're state-approved has been a topic of deep discussion over the last year and a half and two. And so they're, they're also helping us in a way that makes sure that those programs are high-quality, because they don't fall under our purview to, we don't have anything other than sending students there to like, hold them accountable for having high-quality staff, but the state does. And so they are looking into that, they're partnering. I know state rep Napoli and others have been really working hard and pushing, making sure those programs are high-functioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johns.
Thank you.
Number seven, request approval to accept Wendell Cross pre-K to eighth-grade construction. Mr. Albini.
Good evening, once again, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Board of Education Student Representative and Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. I'm here before you this evening so we can begin the process of accepting Wendell Cross pre-K eight school as complete. This is similar to when I was in front of you just a few meetings back, accepting our roof projects as complete. It is a little bit different, roof projects, if you will, elevators are non-priority, but schools are priority grants, and they hold a substantial amount of money that is owed to us. So we want to file our 049-F with the state, telling DAS, hey, we're done. What you promised to give us in money, we have completed, and we can get our balance returned, and then we can start that process for the next, it takes a couple of years. So we'll get audited, and they'll look at our expenditures, were they eligible, were they not eligible? So we want to start that process while everything is fresh, people are in their place, they remember the project. This does not affect the lawsuit that is in place with the problem that we had on Christmas Day, that somebody's, many people in this room's Christmas Day was ruined with that water break. So we just want to get this started, that stays in place, but we want to tell the state that the project is complete.
Any questions? Number eight, Mr. Albini. Use of school facilities by school organizations and/or departments.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education Commissioners. The Education Department has received ten requests for building and school facilities used by schools, school organizations, and/or city departments, as listed in your packet, and they request Board of Education approval.
Any questions? Mr. Albini.
Once again, good evening, Honorable Board. The Education Department has received five requests for building and school facilities used by an outside organization. They are the City Youth Theater for Crosby High School Auditorium, Waterbury Nights for the Career Academy Gymnasium, Waterbury Ballers for Generali Gymnasium, AAMC Albanian Group for the Maloney Gymnasium, and five classrooms. And Special Olympics, who request Career, Kennedy, Westside Middle School, Duggan Reed Gymnasiums, and CAFs. They also, the Education Department has received four requests for building and school facilities used by outside organizations, and they request waiver of fees by the Board of Education. Connecticut Royalty, Bucks Hill Gymnasium, Connecticut Lithuanian Club, Gil Martin Gymnasium, Historic Overlook Neighborhood, Kingsbury CAF, and Bridge to Success Wendell Cross CAF.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Albini. Number ten, Superintendent's Update. Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, our Board of Ed Commissioners, and of course, our Student Representative, and our Principal of our Student Representative, Mr. Pierre Saint. I didn't intend to wear my Willbe green, but I'm glad I did. Thank you. That's right. I just want to congratulate, we've got four schools that received a competitive grant to do after-school programming, North End, Hopeville, Kingsbury, and Wilson. Only ninety-five applications were submitted for the state, forty-one were accepted, and we were able to receive four of these grants. So we look forward to providing that opportunity for our families and our students. I want to shine a spotlight on Manny Zaldivar, a multilingual supervisor. He is now being recognized in Washington DC in the Milken Center for Advancing the American Dream. This prestigious institution is dedicated to showcasing individuals and programs that exemplify the four foundational pillars of opportunity: health, education, entrepreneurship, and finance. Manuel was featured in a special exhibit highlighting inspiring individuals who achieved the American Dream, a remarkable and well-deserved recognition for his dedication, leadership, and impact. So congratulations. We had a great day for the gathering, and I saw many of you there, so thank you for being able to come out. President and I like to walk together with a few of our children or grandchildren in tow, and I know a lot of the cabinet was able to make it, so thank you for coming. And I just thought it was a great showing from the Waterbury Public Schools. I know we handed out, Mr. Albini was over two thousand tickets to, for lunch that day, and so I'm pretty sure, we heard a lot of good compliments regarding several different schools showing up, folks showing up. I was really impressed by some of the teachers getting into it and wearing different gear, and I certainly saw people at Chase wearing the cheetah costume, and Mr. Pierre Saint, you were there with the drum line, just, you know, just a great time had by all. Really appreciate everybody showing up and showing out for the gathering. So I stole your shine earlier, you could, you stole mine now, so we're even. I just want to welcome back First Lieutenant Joseph Britton from the US Army Reserve JAG Corps. We are very proud of your accomplishment and your ongoing service to not just our community, but our country.
All right. Yay.
Just a, just a quick thank you to our, to all of our maintainers. There're sometimes the unsung heroes in our district. They get a lot of, they get a lot done on a daily basis, all the way from Mike Kanopka all the way down to the maintainers in the building, and today is National Maintainer Day, and we want to thank them for the work that they do. They probably don't get thank yous enough, they probably get more complaints, and that's unfortunate, because we know how hard they work, and schools don't operate without, and you know, when a kid gets sick, gets who gets called. And when kids don't always treat certain areas of the school correctly, you know, this maintainers get called. So just thank you for everything that you do for us, we really appreciate you. And then, yeah. And then just a quick funding update, because I've sent some information out to the board, but I think it's important for the public to know that as of right now, even with the government shutdown, you know, we are in solid financial footing at the moment. government shutdown, you know, we are in solid financial footing at the moment. Right now, we don't have anything in sight that we should be nervous about. We're getting, we're getting reimbursed for our meals from September. If the government shutdown goes into November, there is, there has been discussion whether or not the federal government has three, they usually have three months in reserve to pay for even the national, for the lunches and the breakfasts. And so we're not quite sure yet if they have those three months in reserve. We haven't been informed of that, but we, we know that Hartford's also talking about what happens if it goes into, past that deadline. The city's talking about it, in case we need to step in as well. All of our federal government, the grants, title entitlement grants are all here. We've been informed of that from the Connecticut State Department of Education, so we're not in fear of losing those as well. So as of right now, you know, the good news is, is that it doesn't seem to be impacting any of our core functions here for the Waterbury Public Schools, and of course, I'll keep you updated if anything changes. And just a reminder to follow us on social media. Thank you.
Superintendent's notification to the Board. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Two seconds. Special meeting.
We can just start right now?
Yep. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education. We will start out with a silent prayer. Can I have my lans do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Vice President Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Arlen.
Present.
Commissioner Latoya Arlen.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Present.
Commissioner Ursa.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone. President Hernandez.
Here. Item number four, Committee on Finance, Commissioner Latoya Arlen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move to approve Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement, RFP 7610, with Apex Educational Solutions LLC for board-certified behavior analyst services.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Let's go Yankees. Let's go Red Sox.
Go Yankees.
Turn off the mic.
Run, run.
Maggie, Maggie.
I haven't heard Maggie get that in a minute.